Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of October twenty first. I will now officially call the meeting to order and the time is one P M. Before we proceed with the land acknowledgement, I'll let everybody know that councillor Hodge Greaves has sent her regrets. She could not make it today. And I'll let you start the land acknowledgement and a moment of silent reflection. I'll now ask members to declare any pecuniary interests. Same no hands, we'll move along to approval of today's agenda circulated and amended. And I have moved councillor War, second by deputy mayor Burt, as circulated. All in favor? Motion's carried. Looking for a motion to adopt the regular minutes and the public meeting minutes from September twenty third as presented or amended. Councillor Walsh as presenter. Seven deputy mayor Burt. All in favor? Motion's carried. Do you have any business of rising from the minutes? Deputy Mayor Burt.
Thank you to your mayor. Just regarding the the public meeting that was held on September twenty third. I think we all realize it became clear that we might need to get a bit more information out to residents. So I just wondered and I wanted to know what the rest of council thought. We do have those tax inserts and information that goes out to residents. I'm wondering if we need to include, you know, map of the township and the county boundaries. Because there seemed to be some confusion as to what municipality we may have been in. And I get it's tricky, we are in a boundary and it's tricky because we have two different, like we have a federal boundary and a provincial boundary as well, which are different. So so I'm just wondering if that should be done. The M P A C, how we arrive at property tax assessment. That is not us, it is them. And I think, I don't know, it might have been about a year ago when M P A C came to us and they had a little video clip. Excuse me, clip. Maybe that link could be included. And then the last one, and I don't know how you change this, but because it's already right on the bill, but that the township collects tax for the township and the county and the education, and I know it's right there, but just, I think people forget that we are the collector for all those three places. So I don't know if we need a motion, and I know some of this information goes out in those inserts, but just to see, to make sure that that information is included. And maybe there's some other stuff as well. I don't know, but that's kind of what I came up with. And I don't, I think you need a motion, but yeah.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yes, because I've got public meeting and it was blatant that some of them didn't real know where we were. Councillor Walsh, did you have?
Yeah, just one question, just advise everybody I had reached out to Melonie regarding the event planning and thank you very much Mel for getting back to me regarding, so November twenty ninth, I actually saw the social media last night. So Santa Claus Parade, Night Market, everything is happening on that night. And I think you mentioned it's sixteen indoor vendors and two outdoor vendors already. So that's promising that that night is getting all pulled together for N one night instead of being two nights. So, thank you, Ben.
Anything further? Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have correspondence item C one through C four. Staff reports R one and R four. And minutes of the special events committee meeting and special business advisory committee. Do you have somebody to move as circulated or amended?
I'll move with comment.
Okay, circulated.
Second please.
Second by councillor War. Councillor Walsh.
Yeah, actually just refer back to C one regarding the proposed amendments to operational payment of development charges. I know I read stuff about Ed and Jordan. So it sounds like if that does proceed, it would mean simply a delay and the D C charge payments coming to us until I think nine to twelve months after building permits are issued or very close to occupancy.
Is that true, you mayor? Yes, generally it takes a new home about nine to twelve months to be built.
Okay, versus right now, we are paid those D C charges upfront.
Yeah, that's right.
So I guess, and I know Jordan commented is we will eventually get the money, it's just from a cash flow standpoint, we're going to get it much later in process than there are. So.
Anything else, councillor Walsh?
You had C three, just regarding Peterborough County, I was just singing through their minutes and noticed that they had just passed their insurance renewal and I had questioned back at Lincoln, Mountmore, Jordan, just who their supplier was, because we use Marsh and the county uses Westland Insurance. I know we're probably at the point where we're too late for twenty twenty six renewal, but just wondering whether as we move into twenty six and into twenty seven is is there an opportunity that we do look at, maybe going out for Tinder and just kind of looking or shopping a little bit more? I know it's tricky because there's only one or two of them. We have to be careful whether that's the right move to make or not, but I just was interested there, we know there's at least two carriers out there.
Councillor War?
Thank you, three mayor, if I may follow up on that. On to this question, the mayor and deputy mayor, where did they come in with insurance rates? Was it lower or was it, like, do we know where that came in? Was it a positive thing? Because we know that in the past, they've been escalating, like, you know, twenty percent almost every year increases. You don't have to answer, I didn't, I know I cut you off guard, but.
Go ahead.
Yes, it came in very favorable. I before the end of the meeting, I can find you that number. Because I don't have it on the top of my head, but it came in much lower than it has other years. Now, some of the claims or the claims are getting much lower as well, so I think that helps. But no, it was much more favorable than it has been in the past. You know, hopefully, you know, they were skyrocketing for a while, so hopefully the trend continues in the township, things across, it's starting to come down. I'll see if I can find that number before the end of the meeting now. Yeah, thank you very much.
Councillor Burt, C four?
Yes, and I sent this question out to to Ed and I just saw that you had answered it on my email. So my question was this, for the M E C P compliance policy, to me, it looked like another download to the province and, but also some of those infractions would all already be covered under the municipal bylaws. Would M E C P be involved? And it just seemed really unclear as to what our responsibility would be versus theirs. So I'll let you answer.
Sure, you're right, thank you. I did a quick read and I think on Thursday, there's going to be another session, information session with them that I've signed up for. But it's just regarding odors, noise, dust, waste and water. Majority of all these are already our own responsibility. And if there was anything to do with water that's minor in nature, we would be able to take care of it. But they're willing to step in. If a municipality lacks the capacity to carry out enforcement for something that's they deem to be the risk level is sufficiently high, then they would just step in as usual. But we've dealt with with the ministry before or trailer parks or for different areas where they have to go in and look at the subject systems and stuff that is outside our jurisdiction. Right, so they they work hand in hand with us now as it is.
And you had R two?
Yes, R two, and just a comment, thank you. Including the historical well data, I found that interesting. And I think that's important, especially in a a year where we're getting the drought, hopefully that newest red line starts to creep up. But it is pretty level with where it has been the last, that last number of years. So thanks for including.
Any further comments? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Moving along, we'll move along to presentations and I'll start. This presentation is for Ontario Senior of the Year Award. This year celebrates the individual contributions of an older adult who has made a lasting impact on our community. This year, we are recognizing someone whose dedication, passion and volunteerism have helped preserve our local heritage and enrich our culture, landscape in truly remarkable ways. Let me share a bit of this year's recipients information. The individual has been a pillar of Asfidel Norwood community for decades. He is a longstanding member of the Asfidel Norwood Historical Society and an active volunteer in the Cultural Heritage Committee. One of the most striking displays of our heritage center features an impressive collection of antique and vintage photograph equipment generously donated for public enjoyment and education. His talents are wide ranging. He is a former longtime member of the Donegal Fiddlers, volunteer with the Norwood Fair's art selection and a creative mind behind the scarecrow challenge. An incentive he helped develop through the cultural and heritage committee in partnership with the Norwood Fair theme. Though our township two hundredth anniversary celebration was disrupted by COVID, he played a key role in commemorating it with a memorial plaque now installed at the Westwood Park. In May twenty twenty five, he was formally honored by the Cultural and Heritage Committee for his exceptional work in preserving and promoting our local history. He is a life member of branch three hundred Legion in Norwood, where he curated and continues to promote the Military Museum, an important tribute to our veterans and to our local military history. Over the years, he has shared his knowledge and passion through historical talks, engaging and educating others on a wide variety of topics. Professionally, he has been accomplished career as a photographer with his specialty in commercial art. He opened his own studio in nineteen sixty seven and holds a degree from the University of Toronto. He has also worked as a freelance photographer and reporter for the Globe and Mail, where he had the opportunity to cover major events, including visits from national figures like John Deefenbaker, John Roberts and Robert Stanfield. And if this wasn't enough, he is also an author with three published historic, history books and a fourth on its way. His titles include Toronto, A Story in Stone, Dressed in Khaki, Profiling, A Norwood Soldier, Captains and Colonels of, or Colonels, Colonels of Peterborough County. His fourth book will be released soon. It is clear this individual embodies the very spirit of this award, lifelong service, creativity, community pride and a deep commitment in preserving the stories that shaped who we are. So on behalf of the township and the province of Ontario, it is my great privilege to name the twenty twenty five Ontario Senior of the Year Award to Mr. Robert Gordon. Well, if you can help here, we'll present it to you. Council, would you please give him the photograph?
Just right here is fine. I won't make you walk far. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. You know. Congratulations. Well, congratulations. You know, I wasn't the senior when this all started. Time marches on. Anyway, I really appreciate this. It's very unexpected and I'm very thankful to all those mysterious people to quote this about. Thank you.
Well deserved. Look my way now, Rob. There, thank you. And one more. For hold the certificate. Yes. Yes, beautiful, thank you. That's lovely, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you. Well deserved, yes. Yes, thanks for the photograph.
No, you did. Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're further than once.
Yes, yes.
The doctor's appointment.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Congratulations.
And next we have the presentation from Alexa Wild, PSD Citywide. Alexa is joining us remotely regarding the asset management plan. Alexa, please proceed when you're ready.
All right, thank you for having me. I just want to confirm that you can hear me and that you can see my presentation on the screen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Perfect. All right, thank you so much for inviting me to speak today. My name is Alexa Wild and I am a senior asset management advisor here at PSD Citywide. We have been working with Asfidel Norwood on your asset management plan, specifically the twenty twenty five requirements. So as a bit of background, we are working towards compliance with Ontario Regulation five eighty seventeen. That is what sparks asset management plan updates, however, they're important in their own right. I do want to give a big thank you to Jordan Webb, who has been critical in getting the information so that we can pull this this report together for you. As a quick summary of where we've come from and the compliance that we are achieving today. Ontario Regulation five eighty seventeen requires asset management planning for Ontario municipalities. It started with requiring asset management policy, moved on to phase one back in twenty twenty two, which required a look at the current state of your core infrastructure, moved on to twenty twenty four requirements, which included an expansion to non-core. And when I use the term core and non-core, it doesn't mean more important or less important. It's just a delineation that the province uses. They consider core infrastructure to be water, wastewater, roads, bridges and the non-core to be vehicles, equipment, buildings, et cetera. And the biggest difference is in today's requirements for twenty twenty five is we include what is called proposed levels of service. So rather than solely looking back at historical statistics, we are looking forward and projecting where do we want to be and do we want to change anything that we're currently doing? So with asset management plans in Ontario, we, after meeting this requirement, we are going to require all municipalities to update their asset management plan at least once every five years. This allows municipalities to kind of see what progress they've made, make a determination if they need to kind of change the direction that they're going. In between those updates, every municipal municipal council needs to conduct a annual review of asset management progress on or before July first of every year. This is just a touch point to see, are we progressing the way that we want to? And we need to make sure that the asset management policy and the asset management plan is posted on the municipal website for public viewing. So I wanted to give a quick recap of where the municipality is currently with the state of your infrastructure. So Asfidel Norwood currently owns approximately eighty three million dollars worth of infrastructure and that is dominated by your road network. That is very common. You own a lot of roads and they're very expensive to maintain and replace, followed by buildings. Now, one thing that I do want to emphasize as part of this asset management plan is later in your agenda, my understanding is you have a water and wastewater study that was completed. Because that was done concurrently, we weren't able to incorporate the results from that study into this asset management plan. So while we do make some recommendations for water and sanitary, I would defer to the the financial plan that is dedicated for those utility infrastructure. However, the rest of it definitely refer to this asset management plan. The overall condition of your your infrastructure is is in pretty good shape. Sixty percent of the assets within the municipality are considered to be in fair or better condition. This is a good balance. You don't want to be replacing things prematurely and having a great condition, but you also don't want to let too many things lag and deteriorate. So you're right in in the middle there and I would say no concerns on the portfolio level. Now, this is the forecasted capital requirements for if you were to do everything required to maintain your infrastructure as is existing today. And the ideal funding level would be about two point three million dollars per year. However, as we get into the proposed levels of service, we have added on a little bit more and I will explain.
Alexa, we have a question for you. Councillor Walsh?
Alexa, if I can, under the slide, overall condition of the asset portfolio, we're basically sitting at sixty percent of assets are in fair, better condition. How would we benchmark to similar sized municipalities? You know?
Um, it it really depends. It's so much of the condition information depends on how much information you're putting into your system. For example, if you have a pickup truck that was expected to last ten years and it's five years old, but no one has done a condition assessment on it, you would assume that it's at fifty percent, it's expended half of its life. However, if you have a low utilization on that pickup truck, it might be at eighty or ninety percent condition. So from an overall perspective, I would say you're right in the middle of municipalities and pushing towards in better shape than than the average.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
All right, so proposed levels of service, this is a new requirement for the twenty twenty five asset management plan. And like I mentioned, it is more forward looking. So the current levels of service are a past performance metric and that is looking at historically, what have you spent? What is the condition today? Whereas the proposed levels of service is setting the goal of what condition do we want to target? What spending level do we want to target? What happens if we spend more? So Ontario Regulation five eighty seventeen does not dictate what metrics need to be used for proposed levels of service. However, they want to make sure that you are looking at at the future, is what you're currently doing making sense for the direction that you want to go? So it's going to be very dependent on each municipality for what your residents want, what they want to pay for. What are the political goals? What is the financial capacity? So we did take that into consideration as we modeled different scenarios moving forward. So within the asset management plan, we did model three different scenarios. So scenario one was maintain existing funding exactly as is, no tax increases, no rate increases. But what would happen in the long term? And what we see is we've got pros and cons with every scenario. And the pros of that is it's the least expensive, there's the lowest financial burden on residents and businesses. However, the cons are that you are increasing what we call our infrastructure backlog, the things that should have been replaced and are just in the queue, but we can't afford to replace them. When you underfund infrastructure in the long term, you risk more asset failures and impacts to services. And it makes the municipality much more reliant on grants. And as we know, grants are becoming harder and harder to come by. So it's really leaving the the fate of your municipality in someone else's hands. So scenario two that we modeled was what if we strive to get to eighty percent of the recommended funding? We realize that maybe we can't make the ideal, but but let's have a balancing act here. So the pros and cons are more in the middle. It's more manageable tax and rate increases and you have a lesser impact on the infrastructure backlog. You're still relying on grants, but it is a bit more of a balance there. And then scenario three is what we actually moved forward with based on feedback from administration. And what this is, is reaching full funding, meaning that after the implementation period, you would be at the recommended funding level for your infrastructure categories. But on top of that, we've included a growth rider on on the tax increases. And while we don't have a list of specific projects that this would be allocated towards, it was voiced that we know that there is growth and that strains the existing financial resources of the municipality. And we want to make sure that we're not sacrificing existing services in order to fund growth. So we wanted to ensure that we had a funding model that incorporated both the existing infrastructure, but also had a bucket of money for when we need to dig into it for those growth related projects. So obviously, the pros of this scenario is that you are much more sustainable in your existing infrastructure. You aren't relying on on grants. You can make sure that you are continuing to provide those services self sufficiently. The cons are that it is the highest option for tax increases and rate increases. So so there is that that balancing act that we we need to consider here. So these were modeled for each category, but I've just got an example here of vehicles. So what we did here was modeled, what would your capital funding look like through the implementation period and really through the next hundred years? And obviously, things change significantly in ten decades. But this is to give you the concept of what happens. So you can see that bottom blue line is what happens if we keep funding levels exactly as they are, which is averaging about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars a year towards vehicles. And you're seeing that that trend line has your average condition being about twenty five percent. And that is in the lower level of the poor condition rating band, I guess you would say. If you were to target eighty percent funding, it gets you up to about that thirty five percent average condition. And if you go with a hundred percent funding, you are averaging more in that fifty percent range, meaning that some of your vehicles are in great condition, some of them are, you know, on their their last legs, et cetera. But it seems much more manageable in the long term, where you're always going to have some reliable vehicles and some that are, you know, on the roster for replacement. So with modeling this, reaching a hundred So with modeling this, reaching a hundred percent funding and having a a growth rider, we did compare the scenarios for what that looks like tax-wise and rate-wise. So for scenario one, as I said, it's the cheapest option, no tax increases, no rate increases. Scenario two is that middle ground, and scenario three is what we're focusing on. So we would be looking at an annual tax increase of two percent dedicated to infrastructure funding. And that would be an annual tax increase every year for the next ten years. When it comes to water rates, you wouldn't actually require any tax increases. However, I will go back to my caveat that this did not include the same information that was able to be utilized in your financial plan for water and sanitary. So I would defer the rates to consider that that rate study or that financial plan for your utilities over this information. So what that looks like in the ten-year outlook is you're currently sitting in a pretty good position based on like where ideal funding would be. But by having this gradual increase over the next ten years in water, sanitary, and tax, but also funding that growth, you are surpassing that ideal funding level so that you've got flexibility in what you intend to spend that capital funding on in the future. And I do have an important note at the bottom here that this is the amount that we're recommending that the municipality sets aside every year for capital projects. It doesn't mean that you have to spend that every single year. There are going to be years where the capital needs are less. However, we still want to see that funding level just allocated to a reserve. Because in the future, you are going to have higher-level expenditures that your annual capital tax collection, et cetera, can't afford. So we want to make sure that when we're recommending these annual funding allocations, that it's being split either to capital projects or being saved into a reserve rather than getting reallocated to other nice-to-have projects, let's say, say that. So with recommendations and next steps, we want to make sure that the asset inventory is constantly being updated. Lots can change with replacement costs. We saw that during COVID, that construction costs skyrocketed. So we want to make sure that we are projecting, moving forward, using the latest information. And also making sure that we, where we can, we are inputting information such as condition assessments, and that will really help with capital projections in the future. Continuous improvement, making sure that this document doesn't just live on a shelf and it is looked at annually to see if progress is being made and helps to inform that long-term planning. With that, it really does help if administration is asking for some operating funds to help support that ongoing maintenance of their asset management plan. We always recommend incorporating that into the operating budget. And with levels of service, making sure that we have some mechanism in place to communicate between administration and council of progress that has been made. So when that annual report comes back to council, you can monitor where are we? Are we meeting our goal? Are we falling behind, et cetera? And with next steps, we obviously recommend that you review and consider the findings of the asset management plan and consider them within your budget deliberations. Support administration where needed and develop a process for the regular review and tracking of asset management progress. As per Ontario Regulation 58817, the next iteration of the municipality's asset management plan is required in 2030. So we are recommending to all of our clients, use the next few years to improve your data, improve your projections. And then the next iteration will be even more accurate and reliable as you move forward. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Alexa. Any questions? Comments? Deputy Mayor Burt?
Thank you, Threemare. Thank you very much for the report. It's nice to get this cart wrapped up, so all three of those sections are done. I just had a couple, I guess, questions and whether that would be for you or Jordan. So eighty-three million is today's asset value. That's in today's dollars. So when we look at the funding scenario, does that include like annual possible inflation, that sort of thing? Or is that considered today's dollars? So that was my first question.
So I'll touch on two points here. So first of all, the asset management plan is based on today's dollars and is a snapshot in time. So when we are recommending a two percent tax increase, that is only accounting for increasing the funding to meet today's dollars. Inflation would be in addition to that. One of the other pieces that I did want to emphasize is that asset management is a, you're never done. It's always, there's always room to improve. And one of the areas that we would recommend improvements is in the replacement costs that are being used in the asset management plan. Many of the replacement costs being used are just inflationary on on historical costs of what it was originally cost to construct or install. Whereas we do see that in specific categories, it doesn't necessarily follow inflation. If you look at vehicles, if you look at, you know, a vehicle that was purchased in the nineties and you inflate it to today's dollars, it's going to say that a pickup truck will cost you, you know, thirty-five thousand dollars. And I don't know any pickup truck that you can buy for thirty-five thousand dollars today. So that is an area for improvement, is looking at real costs as opposed to relying on inflation for many of these asset categories.
Thank you. And one more follow-up that I made there. So obviously, when we look at these funding models and all of that, there are no grants or partnered funding in this. So that's an important piece as we move forward, is that can, you know, change the outcome of this, correct? I just wanted to make sure that was correct.
Yes, absolutely. So what we use within the asset management plan is what is considered sustainable funding. And so we do include the OSIF funding and CCBF funding because they are considered recurring, reliable, sustainable grants. Whereas this is not counting any one-time grants or short-term grants. So that would be a bonus. It would reduce the amount that you would need to increase your taxes. It would allow you more flexibility in how you spend your your increased capital funding if you are successful in grants. So what this is giving you is a recommendation to be self-sufficient. However, we do understand that the reality is you will be getting some level of grant funding. And we want that to just complement what is in this plan.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Council Walsh?
And actually, again, thank you very much for the presentation, Alexa. You actually answered my one question around the costing, whether we were using current adding inflation or using real costs. And you've identified that's one area where we potentially have some improvements on. So that's good to know. And the second question, Deputy Mayor Burt already asked, and that was regarding whether there was any grants included in that or not. That would be bonus money on top. Okay, thank you. Council War.
Thank you, Threemare. Thank you again for the presentation. And yes, a couple of questions have already been asked and answered. I did have one question on the buildings that you had and the overall condition of the asset portfolio. And in it, three-point-four million dollars of the buildings in this particular were classified as very poor. What does, okay, so what does that mean? Like, should they be replaced? Or what do you mean by very poor condition for buildings?
So this is, again, an area for improvement. If you, I don't expect you to flip back and forth, but on page twenty-three of the asset management plan, we do have a summary of where condition data was obtained from. And for buildings, we only have six percent of the buildings with an actual condition rating. So what that is reflecting is, in my example that I used for the pickup truck, we can use for a building, that if a building was originally estimated to last fifty years and it's forty years old, it will automatically be assessed as in poor condition. Whereas if someone physically went and inspected the building, they might say, hey, this building is faring a lot better than expected because we've kept up our maintenance and upkeep. Whereas a forty-year-old building that's had zero maintenance might very well be in very poor condition. So I would say take that with a grain of salt because we are relying solely on age-based data as opposed to a building condition assessment.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Any further questions, comments? Well, thank you, Alexa. Very good report. And now I'll ask council to get a motion to receive this presentation for information right then. Deputy Mayor Burt, Counselor War, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thanks again, Alexa.
Thank you for having me.
Moving along to staff and committee reports, I'll start with our treasurer to proceed with our five. Jordan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Threemare. So our five is just the asset management plan, council report. I think Alexa touched on the details of the report, but if there are any additional questions or anything you think you need clarification on? I can do my best to answer it. So a couple of the main points I have, I think that that is important for us to remember as we head into the draft budget season. The info is constantly changing, so the decision that you make maybe for next year or a couple of years might change again down the road. I think it's up to staff to make sure that we're updating the information the best that we can. Obviously, there's areas that we need to improve, but I think there are costs that come with some of these facility reports. Full disclosure, I don't know, and I'd have to ask to see perhaps our CEO has that history, if it's a consultant that needs to do these types of reports and what that cost looks like. We saw the cost of the master facilities plan a couple of years ago and that type of thing. I think, you know, what we need might be quite detailed and there might be costs, but you know, we can weigh in kind of the pros and the cons of it and get something in the budget long term. This year, I don't know if we'll have it available, but I think as the staff as a whole commit to it, improving the asset tracking and data, and we get the system updated, it should help us long-term planning from a financial standpoint. We've also included in the draft budget, which you'll see on the thirtieth of October, one-point-five percent asset management allocation to go towards infrastructure and assets. And I think that's pretty much it. There's any questions?
You weren't far off when you said one-point-five and she said two percent. Nice to be that close. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Jordan. So when you're, you know, you're updating these asset management plans, I guess it's more of a procedural thing. Is there citywide or something like that? Is there a template that all this goes in and you can change? I just was wanting to know the procedures. Is there a way to make it easier for staff to plug in the information to track it on an annual basis? Or is it not? I'm just curious.
Threemare, so essentially, it's just a big database of our information. When we obtain the asset, the cost at the time of obtaining the asset, the lifespan of the asset, that kind of thing. In my discussions with Alexa, we asked for recommendations. Some of them were mentioned in the presentation. Actual replacement costs versus historical costs, right? If we have that truck and we figure that it can last ten years, there's a breakdown of the cost over the ten years, and then there's a replacement cost based on whatever number they use for inflation in their report. The recommendation is that we do the work to come up with an actual placement cost. The trade-off is, hello manager, can you go out and obtain costing on this? How accurate is it? How much time does it take? The good news is we have five years. One of the questions I did after Alexa was, what is the timeline? She said start from twenty-thirty and work backwards. It's not something that needs to be fully completed in twenty-twenty-six, but as you get into twenty-twenty-eight, you should be very comfortable with that you've got all of this information. You know, think of it as a multi-year plan, which I think will help us being small and the staff resources that we have. Some of the departments, it won't be too bad to get those numbers. But depending on the infrastructure and the estimates, again, you potentially get into costing models, whether vendors volume, invest the time to provide that cost estimate for free and those types of things. But we should definitely get there. The system is good. The system is capable. It's a matter of us investing the time. One thing I should have touched on before, I can't remember if it was in council report. So this started in May of twenty-twenty-four, I believe. We completed phase two in April of twenty-twenty-five, which was a bit late. The province deadline was July first, twenty-twenty-four. However, there's a lot of municipalities in a similar boat as we were. Phase three carried on after that, and we're still a little bit late. July first, twenty-twenty-five was a requirement after that. So it was dropped on staff relatively quickly. Citywide did a great job, in my opinion. Alexa, they did have some turnover there. We've experienced some turnover here. They did put a lot of work on our staff, and I do appreciate all the work. I know she mentioned me by name, but a lot of the managers were expected to go through these assets, double-check, verify to make sure that the report is as accurate as it is. The other thing I should mention is a snapshot in time, as Alexa mentioned, we're talking about that with the water financial plan as well. There were projects in the water financial plan that weren't necessarily in the asset management plan, just based off of timing. Like I said, this has been a year and a half project that we've been working on. So some of the information that they got was at an earlier time.
Any questions or comments, Jordan? Council Walsh?
Yes, and again, thank you very much, Jordan. But yeah, this looks like it's a big task. Are we able to, I'm trying to think, we've got five years, and have it updated again. Could we take it in chunks? Is that a better way to do it? Do a little bit all the time, trying to keep it updated, realizing that our manager is going to do the very best to get real costs. Are we going to be able to get pro bono work done by a consultant? Probably, we would be pushing it to get all of that done. But if we, instead of it being, oh my God, we've got to do this all in twenty-twenty-six, as we take, we kind of prioritize and we do a little bit every year. So I need to approach the date.
Threemare, I guess. I think so. I think ideally what we should probably do is an implementation plan comes back at some point in twenty-twenty-six that lays out the next three or four years to get to twenty-third. To try to get some of this stuff up to date the best that we can. Ideally, I would like to do it in-house in twenty-thirty-two. It is a substantial cost for us. If we, I think if we do a, we do well enough to get the information updated, I don't think the report itself, although time-consuming, I don't think, you know, we're reinventing the wheel to pump out a report. We've got a template. There'll be other municipalities that have that template as well, that we can kind of be off of. So long-term goals, that's my long-term goal. I don't know if we'll get there, but I think, you know, it starts with kind of a plan over the next four, five years. And as I need to come back each year with the asset management plan update, I think that's kind of the best, the best fast forward.
Oh, Council War?
There's one follow-up.
Go ahead.
Is there any value in speaking to our neighbor municipalities that, you know, we're all on this together? And being able to garner some key nuggets of information, the things that they're doing well, that we could pull, things we're doing well, we can share with them, just to try to share the workright here. It looks like a daunting, daunting. just try to share the workload here. It looks like a daunting job, you know, you want that. Just even on understanding what real costs are from a form of another municipality nearby, so this is what we need to operate and never thought about. We can have those slides.
Through you, Mayor. Yes, I I have uh, made a conversation with some treasurers. I won't name them.
Right.
But uh, similar uh, issues, getting the information updated, getting buy-in from the staff. We didn't have that problem, in my opinion. The staff worked very well, um, to provide the information. And again, at times it was a lot of information and the deadlines were quick to try to to get it turned around. Um, I think it's a challenge for all small municipalities. Uh, where do you find the time to go through these lists? To get updated costing, to get updated uh, condition reports and and that type of thing. So um, I think, yeah, if we brainstorm, um, we could come up with with maybe some solutions. Um, but I think too, you gotta put your head down and you gotta, you gotta try to get some of the work done to kind of get caught up. I think, you know, you mentioned daunting task. That's probably it, right? They see it's so big, it's so much time and it, it kind of delays whoever getting there.
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Walsh?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor. Um, yeah, it was a big job for it. It was a lot of reading this weekend. No, it was, it was fine. Um, well, I wanted to say uh, was I like that you say, and we've said this before. It's a living document, so things do change over time. And you know, you look at this and you look at some of the numbers and you go, oh, my gosh, like, you know, when we're reading through it, you know, for the first time. But uh, you know, as you said, break it, I like what Councilman Walsh said. Break it down into manageable pieces to, you know, to try to implement each year or whatever to update. Maybe that's, that's how you face the challenge for twenty thirty. It seems like a long ways away, but I guess it isn't.
Through you, Mayor. No, it's it's very close, but again, it's gotta be a team effort.
Yeah.
And I think uh, it's fresh in our minds right now and some of the managers that have been involved. So if we can kind of keep the ball rolling, I think it will help if we delay and push it out for a year and a half, two years. You you get into uh, you know, your back memory issues.
Try to get that buy-in. That sounds like we, you, we have here the township that everybody's been on board with.
That's good. Uh, Deputy Member?
Yeah, just just one more question. Um, so when we we look at the report and um, particularly the the first one that Alexa had shown us and we're opting for that scenario three and it says eight. Um, Asfodell Norwood has has elected scenario three. So as we go through each budget cycle, the goal is to be fully funded by that ten-year mark. Um, so are we legally tied to this scenario three? Like, there's, there's going to be fluctuations from one year to the next. So once we hit year ten, if we haven't hit that, it's just we haven't hit it. Like, there's not a penalty from the province. I'm just throwing that out there. I just want to see where we're at.
Through you, Mayor. I think Alexa spoke to it in one of the slides where you aren't helped to.
Okay.
And yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Rate increase, uh, okay. These reports need to be done. The information needs to be provided and council needs to make decisions that they feel are necessary. The recommendation that we chose, uh, the third scenario was more of just um, to show you what's needed. Like, we could recommend the point eight um, percent increase, which I think was eighty percent uh, of replacement value, but it's not going to get us where we need to eventually get to. So um, you know, our preference obviously is that we get there sooner rather than later, but each year and and tax year uh, comes with different challenges. And so I think the biggest thing is that we have the information and we act, we're asking for you to pass the asset management report or not, uh, it's no commitment to that percentage. That two percent, the one and a half, the replacement and the point five for growth, there's no commitment to that uh, year-over-year right now at this time. We're essentially um, looking to get the information out. We'll speak to it again at the draft budget meeting and then uh, you know, long-term, unless somebody feels we need to to look at it a different way.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, um, recommended motion is that the council, the township of Asfodell Norwood accepts this report. And further, the council approves the asset management plan for twenty twenty-five. I have a move. Uh, Deputy Mayor Burt and Counselor War, all in favor? Motion's carried. Uh, it's my two, I don't know if I want to. Yeah, I think I'll call a recess here for a couple of minutes because we have a public meeting that we will be going into at two o'clock. So I don't want to start this other one if it's not in the middle of it. Motion for this, Counselor War, Counselor Walsh. Welcome, everybody. Again, the time is two o'clock and the Committee of Adjustment has entered into a public hearing to consider minor variance file number A dash zero one dash twenty twenty-five. Uh, to begin with, I'll ask any committee members, any community interests, research. No hands being raised, that's good. Um, moving along, I'll turn the floor over to. Sorry. Seeing no hands, may I get a motion to approve today's public hearing agenda as circulated? Counselor Warren, Counselor Walsh, all in favor? That motion's carried. Thank you. And now I'll hand the floor over to you, uh, our chief building official.
You through you, Mayor. I'll just first read the uh, appeal process. So if a specified person does not make oral submissions at the public hearing or make written submissions to the committee before the decision is made, the person is not entitled to appeal the committee's decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal. And if a specified person does not make oral submissions at the public hearing or make written submissions to the committee before the decision is made, the person may not be at, as a party to the hearing of an appeal for the Ontario Land Tribunal. Unless it is in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. And also to be notified, copy of the decision of the committee will be sent to the applicant, to each person who participated in the public hearing and who filed with the committee secretary treasurer a written request for the notice of the decision. So if you want a copy of the decision, you have to ask Melanie Fordland to be notified. So having done that, now we can get right into the council report. Subject lands are known as eighteen fifty-three Asfodell, Asfodell Eighth Line. And the purpose and effect of the minor variance, if approved, it'll allow the construction of a detached garage. The application submitted to this committee of adjustment decreases the front yard setback from thirty meters down to fifteen meters for the front yard that's on the eighth line. And a decrease of the side yard setback of fifteen meters to three meters. That's from uh, the township of Asfodell Norwood zoning bylaw two thousand nine dash zero eight. So the, the property that we're speaking about is owned rural with some official plant or environmental production. And the rural zone requires the thirty-meter setback in the front and fifteen-meter side yard setback. The majority of the properties uh, neighboring this are zoned rural residential. They allow a fifteen-meter front yard setback and a three-meter side yard setback. So there was at least eight, I counted at least eight properties where rate adjacent to or nearby, those are the permitted setbacks. And the applicant is asking to have the same setbacks as the neighboring residential properties. There's more properties beyond this one that are the same fifteen-meter front yard setback and three-meter side yard setback beyond it, but I just looked in the immediate area. So the uh, uh, as I said, there was at least eight uh, properties with fifteen meter front yard setbacks and three-meter side yard setbacks nearby. And we are satisfied that the four tests required in approving a minor variance, they're met. And the requirements are that it be minor in nature, be desirable and appropriate development or use of the land or building or the structure in the area. Maintain the general intent and purpose of the zoning bylaw and maintain the general intent of the uh, intent and purpose of the official plan. And so the uh, the zoning bylaw is about an inch to an inch and a half thick. There's two lines that this application doesn't comply with in the entire book. So is the, in in my mind, the intent, the general intent of the zoning bylaws maintain ninety-nine point nine percent type thing. And the general intent of the official plan, those are our two main documents that the township works with. Again, since it is in complying, compliance with ninety-nine percent of the bylaw, zoning bylaw, it's in compliance with the official plan as well, the intent. We circulated the application out to property owners within a hundred and twenty meters and we circulated the application to agencies. Uh, we received comments from the Coretta Pine Ridge District School Board. They had no concerns. We received uh, comments from the Peterborough County Engineering and Construction regarding uh, the application. They had no concerns. Uh, since writing the report, we received comments from ORCA uh, with no concerns and the, since we had the mail strike going on, uh, we had staff deliver, hand-deliver the notices to everybody within that circulated area. And we recommended to the applicant that he talked to neighboring uh, property owners as well, if if at all possible, just to make sure if they have any concerns that we could address them. We did, uh, we have not received any calls or any uh, comments, except uh, we did receive some comments from one neighboring property. And they were concerned about future plans to build a second dwelling unit uh, for family members or for how this minor variance could possibly uh, adversely affect their property. And so I just want to say that this minor variance application being for a detached garage with some front yard setback of fifteen meters and a side yard setback of three meters does not affect any property whatsoever. So there's zero effect to any property, any of their future considerations. Uh, there's nothing that uh, this minor variance application can negatively affect anybody else. So anybody that wants to come in for building permits to do other dwelling units or to do other type of construction, this detached building, this minor variance application won't change anything, it won't affect it. So the engagement I spoke to with a hundred and twenty meters, um, I did uh, reach out to the uh, people that had some concerns uh, that that came to the township uh, office. And after explaining that the this minor variance will not affect their property negatively, uh, then we received an email back saying that uh, it looked like I had addressed their concerns. The notice was posted on the township website. The notice was posted on the site itself. Uh, conclusion, the minor variance will decrease or reduce the front yard setback to fifteen meters and decrease the side yard setback to three meters and allow the owner to build this detached garage. If no appeals are filed with the committee's secretary treasurer within twenty days of the, this committee of adjustments uh, decision, the decision of the committee is final and binding at four thirty P M, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. A part of the application you received or part of the report you received, the uh, application notice of a public hearing and now it's a complete application. And if there's uh, any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And again, this uh, these setbacks are exactly the same as the majority of all the neighbors would be permitted to. If if the neighbors came in and they wanted to build a garage at the fifteen-meter front yard setback and three-meter side yard setback, they would get building permits to do so. So it is in keeping with the uh, the area as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions or listen to the gallery and see if there's any concerns and then try to answer.
Okay, I'll start with uh, council. Any questions from counselors? Counsel Walsh?
I just, just for you all, because I I had reached out to Ed as to why there were, there was need for different setbacks uh, on this piece of property versus neighboring properties. Um, and and kind of get back to me. So this particular piece of property is is owned rural because it's twenty-five acres. And whereas all the other properties around are zoned rural residential, so that's why there was the different setbacks. But to your point, um, it's basically just keeps it consistent with everybody in there and I I don't, don't foresee this. Actually, I just want to make everybody aware of the, of the warning from uh, Deputy Member.
Uh, yeah, thank you through you and more, more just a comment. Certainly, when I saw the, when I was going through the application and I saw the map, I thought, well, there's all kinds of room south, the south of there. But then as you go through the application for the minor variance, um, you've got underground hydro wires and you've got septic at the back and you start changing that, that that's tens of thousands of dollars. So um, I, I have no issues with this and uh, and it, I, I think this is this is the best um, result that you can get, um, is going through a minor variance versus changing all of the infrastructure that's already there.
Yes, through you, Mary. It seems like, at first, uh, I heard about an application coming in to reduce the front yard setback uh, from thirty meters to fifteen meters for a detached garage on a twenty-five acre parcel. I was like, no. Absolutely not.
Yeah.
Like, how can you not? And then once I seen the property, seen the location of the existing build, uh, pond duck here, septic over here, all these different scenarios, uh, sure, you could put one back three hundred feet and over two hundred feet or type of thing to find a spot. And with the ORCA development area, they will not even require an ORCA permit putting it where it is. So it's much better to put it in a, a good high-dry area, actually, compared to getting into a regulated area, more red tape type of thing as well.
Yeah.
True. Uh, okay, thank you, Ed. I'll now ask for uh, the meeting record. Are there any persons in the audience to speak in support or in opposition of this application? Okay. Read the recommended motion for the committee's consideration that the committee of adjustment for the township of Asfodell Norwood accepts this report and further that the committee approves minor variance application A dash zero one dash twenty twenty-five for my loan uh, as submitted. We have a move. Uh, Deputy Member, uh, Counselor War, all in favor? The motion's carried.
Now the check mark is done.
All. I'm saying, what is, and now adjournment. I'll ask for a motion for adjournment of the public meeting held on October twenty-first and the time is two thirteen and further that we return to our regular meeting of council to be, was it? Counsel Walsh, Counsel War, all in favor? Motion's carried.
Okay.
Were you people here for the uh, public meeting? Were you people here for the uh public meeting?
Yes, if you want to leave, you can, or you can stay for the meeting, it's an option, seriously, I just. Let's have a, okay, short word for that. Thank you very much, yes.
Okay, we're moving back to uh. Jordan, please continue with our six wastewater study and financial plan. Adam, you get the set beside today.
Thank you, three men, so this is the water wastewater study and financial plan for twenty twenty five to twenty thirty five. Um, I'll do my best and present it as well as Alexa did, it's very similar to the asset management, uh, reporting the data that was collected. Um, and some of the recommendations that were made. Um, so the report was developed uh in collaboration with citywide, uh, similar to the asset management plan. It provides a ten year financial strategy to ensure sustainable water and wastewater systems. Uh, in the township, it examines two servicing. Uh, scenarios, one, the status quo scenario, um, with limited growth, so essentially phase four. From a growth standpoint. And then it's expansion scenario, which is our. Future wastewater. System upgrades that will lead to um development in the future. Uh, the report is required to renew our municipal drinking water license, which expires April uh twenty twenty six. We need to have the report completed October twenty twenty five to meet, to meet the requirement. Uh, and it aligns with. Oreg four fifty three uh oh seven, uh, which ensures financial viability of municipalities' water systems. Um, the report came about from the Lockerton Inquiry, uh, with recommendations emphasizing multi-barrier protection, sustainable financing. And transparency and accountability in municipalities' water and wastewater systems. Before I get to uh. The next portion here, I just want to mention again that it is a stop shot in time. The time is a little bit different and there's updated projects and amounts from our asset management. So Adam worked extremely hard uh to provide the numbers and some of the projects uh to citywide. So that we could get this rate study as accurate as possible. Uh, I think we're comfortable. Um, with the projects that are in there and some of the information that's in there, but again, it's constantly changing. Some of the scenarios we may have in there might change based on council's decisions with budgets, uh, it's sort of. It's important that we're updating the information again in the asset management system because it impacts uh our water and financial uh rate studies as well. Um, and we've considered the recommendation, staff have considered the recommendations that were made in the reports. And we will uh apply those to the draft budget for water and wastewater. So the financial implications of this report at this time, councillor Burt, there's no immediate financial uh impact and commitments. Um, the costs are to be addressed in future budgets, so twenty twenty six and on. Um, and again, any recommendations uh will be integrated in our twenty twenty six draft budgets. Um, for the department, so, um, you know, we, we want a. A council approved plan that's legally required to get a license, so that's what we're hoping for today. Also, uh, using the plan to make sure that our long term uh sustainable financial framework is in place. For water and wastewater departments. And to try to strengthen the infrastructure planning and governance as well as our service uh reliability. Okay, I'm gonna get to the study itself, are there any questions, sorry? At this point?
No.
Okay, so I don't have a great PowerPoint like Alexa, but I'll just kind of quickly talk, uh. The subjects, if anyone needs the tables brought up in the report, we can ask. Uh, not only to bring them up, but I can speak to. So the beginning of the report just touched. Touches down or explains kind of our current setup. Um, how the township operates from a waters uh standpoint and a wastewater standpoint, you get this each year, I think, in the budget. Um, but again, it's just, it's there. Essentially for the public to see, this will be posted on your website. Uh, we have a shared user fee structure with a fixed uh amount charged as well as a variable. Amount and uh we set annual rates uh in accordance with our twenty twenty six budgets. Now, for the recommendations in the reports, the finals. Um, Alexa touched on a good part. Point, another good point that I think is important is uh us relying on grants a lot of the time. Um, they are great if we can get them, um. I think it's important that we are uh not relying on moving forward and we'll touch base a little bit. Uh, on that through our, our budget process, um. The recommendations from the report are increases, obviously, uh, from a water wastewater and our Trentview Estates system. Uh, in each scenario, the status quo scenario and the growth scenario. Part of this is our need to uh factor in the actual replacement cost versus the historical cost, which I'll touch on in the asset management. Uh, plan, um, but the good news is, if there is any good news, um, that our current rates are very low compared to neighboring communities, so. Um, although we're underfunding uh at the moment, um, our water and wastewater assets, um, there may be some room to. To start. Finding a better path to, to make sure that we'll have it early, uh, funded. So I'm gonna touch base on the recommendations just quickly from a rate standpoint, and then Adam will talk about kind of future projects that we have included. Uh, in the summary, so for the water system. Um, the status quo recommendation is uh about five point eight percent increase till each year till twenty thirty five, which. Which obviously is a very, very big number. Uh, under an expansion scenario, it, it drops to two point zero six percent. Which may seem strange if you look at the expansion scenario as the. The cost of additional infrastructure, but what brings that percentage down is the additional users, so we, we provided citywide with an estimate and we worked with it. On what we think and hope, uh, a growth, um. As our schedule would look like for homes. Citywide factored that into their model. Um, and they use that. On the wastewater system side, uh, under the status quo, we're looking at five point five eight percent annual increase. Uh, in the expansion scenario, four point four nine percent. And for Trentview, um, Estates, uh, because they are separate model altogether. Uh, their recommendation is a sample and seven four. Percent annual increase. Rate adjustments, I think, are inevitable, I mentioned this to councillor Walsh, uh, in an email, um. Doesn't always mean that. The rates here are what has to be done for budgets, but I definitely think they need to be considered, we, we need to look. Um, at our current funding model, uh. Seriously, um, the, the recommended increases are quite high, but again, when it comes to the actual. Cost of replacement for assets, um. We're severely underfunded at this point. Uh, we need to close the infrastructure funding gaps. Uh, it'll help with our cash flow as well, um, rate increases. And uh, just allows a little bit of financial sustainability for the water and wastewater departments.
Yeah, so for the future water system upgrades, um. It's not a long list in ten years, that look like a long list, but with the, the wastewater expansion, we know we're actually coming down the pipe, we're not going to. Look like we're dedicating a lot of funds, we know that's coming down the pipe, so, um. Including this plan was, uh, I was said in water main and water service upgrades that we will apply fund for funding for, we're still waiting to hear on. Funding status, um. There's approximately twenty five water meters in order that we need to replace, that cost fifteen thousand dollars. As part of the future growth, we need to look at the off, the capacity to take water out, projects already been started. Um, that's going to carry through twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven. And then if the wastewater expansion does grow, there will be a project to. Increase the equipment and supply, but not at the water treatment plant. That's five hundred thousand is just a. Cautious number, because they're still working on the permanent take water number, we don't know what the requirement necessary is for the water treatment plant yet. Um, on the wastewater side, we've got a vehicle replacement, uh, car of forty Alvine Street upgrades. Um, Maple Lab, it's kind of been on the head of us for a while, it's a problem tree before we've swallowed a lot of infiltration there. And then the, it's a, the expansion project at the wastewater treatment pump and station.
One thing I will add is, in, in this project model, it does account for some grant funding. So the asset management plan didn't have that here for the projects that we've provided to citywide. It's kind of these key, key projects that you see in the table on page eight of the report, um. Those do factor in, uh.
Grants.
Yeah, yeah. So any questions, we'll do our best to answer them. No?
All right, uh, Jordan, Adam, go ahead, uh, councillor Ward.
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor, um, I did have a, um, a, a question and, and just maybe a comment on. The, the charts that were provided for the average annual water charges, um, it's on page thirteen. Yeah, and so you, uh. And, and the sewer charges and you, um, you know, took into account some of our neighboring municipalities. Um, I was just wondering, uh, I, I guess maybe I'm just not a chart person. I was, I was wondering if at some point you might be able to get more of a number figure for each, like. Uh, like I just found it hard to see what, what was being charged for our township per resident as. Uh, for another municipality, and I was wondering about more specific numbers than that chart that was provided. I don't know if anyone else have that or not, but, you know, because we're talking, because those are the ones that you're comparing to where we're sitting at for not. You know, uh, having enough. Uh, in revenue coming in from those, so I was just curious, um. If, uh, it, it doesn't have been provided today, but maybe in the future, if you could maybe get some more, um, substantial, yeah, knowing the numbers, that would be okay.
Through you, Mary, yes, that's, that's not a problem, I'm. Trying to look quickly if it's in the dependencies here or not, I don't think it is, but I could reach out to. Uh, our citywide consultant and ask them to provide it and we can, we can provide the, the fixed and variable rates for each.
Thank you, yeah, it just makes it easier when we see concrete nodes or some other, uh, taxpayers are paying in other municipalities, because. You know, as you look at the, you know, recommend, recommendations of like five point eight four and. Really five point eight four, uh, that's a lot, right? And look at those numbers and go, wow. It's a. Yeah, anyways, I just wanted to see what numbers, when it came down to uh numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Walsh. Just comment, I, it was interesting reading through it as, you know, we've set rates year after year based on kind of what's happened. That year in terms of projects, but the reality is, we see this in the asset management plan is, we're easing infrastructure. And some point that aging infrastructure don't have to be replaced. And it doesn't look like we've really accounted for that well in the past, so I think, you know, that will play into some rate. Potentially some rate increases that are a little higher than what our residents been used to, but the reality is, we have to be. Saving a few dollars down the road and banking somebody to pay us. Pay for your stuff. Or infrastructure down the road. Uh, definitely no good.
Uh, yeah, thank you, and I guess just following up on councillor Walsh's, we, we have been relying on reserves and we. Jordan's nodding his head emphatically, we, we have to. Yeah, we, 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 we really do, and it's not just us, it's every municipality, this is not unique to us. Um, I guess the, the one question I had was the Trent Valley or Trentview Estates, um. So that increase would be on our end, but they will likely have their own increase as well, correct, or? Like when we're looking at the rate increases, would that be total or? If they increase, um, their rates to the township, that obviously gets passed on. To the residents as well.
Through you, Mary, yeah, so Trent Hills, you mean?
Yeah, Trent Hills, yeah, like the, the subdivision on the, by Hastings, yeah.
Sorry.
Seven, 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 four increase, annual increase was the number, uh.
Yeah, through Mary, I'm not understanding the section, is it?
Increase to the residents, but would there be an additional increase that we are, that, um, Trent Hills puts on us, which would increase that even more? I, I guess what I'm asking, is there a double? Could that potentially be more?
Through you, Mary.
They increase the rates to us.
Um, we hope not, we asked citywide to factor that in, we asked them to pull Trent Hills financial plan, but they weren't able to find.
Oh, okay, okay.
But they did use trends. That we're seeing in our pipe charges and our costs associated from Trent Hills and they factor that into the model, so. Essentially, our costs from Trent Hills show as expenses and also show as revenues.
Okay, I just, there's a double hit there, okay. Thank you, I heard it that really badly, so glad you figured it out.
Sorry, through you, one thing I wanted to add is just about underfunding, uh, assets, I think it's a. Countrywide issue for provincial, for sure, the province, there's a provincial requirements on the water side. On the asset management side, to get everyone up to speed and aware of what's needed so that we don't eventually. Get into a tough, tough situation, so, um, yes, I think. You know, it's easy to look back and say, maybe some things could have been different, but I think. Uh, a lot of municipalities are in a similar situation and this is kind of the information that. Um, should help us moving forward.
No further questions? Thank you, Jordan and Adam. Councillor, we're, you've read standard motion that councillor of the township of Aspedale Norwood accepts this report. Thirdly, the council reports of water wastewater study, financial plans for twenty twenty five. Task twenty thirty five. With councillor Walsh. Backed by Deputy Mayor, all in favor, motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving along to our seven, I'll ask our clerk to proceed now.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you.
Proceed your bylaw update.
Yes, as the mayor said, I have a couple of proposed, um, updates to a procedure by law today. Specifically Article eight and Article thirteen. So Article eight looks like closed meetings. And as we know, the municipal act allows council to go into closed session on, under prescribed situations. And to reinforce best practices around that, um, recommending that the language and the bylaw read. But all closed session materials, both electronic and hard copy, are to be deleted and returned to the clerk at the conclusion of the meeting. And also that council members are not to keep personal notes and records of closed session discussions. This is already what council is doing, it's just putting that practice outright in our bylaw. And that's in response to the, it was councillor Caltrave's question about some parameters in closed session. It's, it's not that the act doesn't allow note taking, it's just that it's a best practice observed by Ms. Palms across Ontario. So. Having the meeting minutes, or that's the true record of that meeting. There's really no need to have personal notes and it just removes the township many risks. That could come out of accidental confidentiality breaches, even. Their creative information request, uh, closed meeting investigation and all, it's been, any of those things could just be removed if we just didn't have that piece available. And secondly is a central change to our consent agenda process. So as we know, our consent agenda allows correspondence for information, housekeeping and informational staff reports. And minutes from county council and our local boards and committees. And those are all adopted in one seating motion, so if we made the change that I'm proposing today. We would also include correspondence that we receive from other municipalities. So quite often, and as you'll see coming up on the agenda, we have at least five pieces of correspondence from other municipalities that's related to. Everyone Ontario, the city of theirs also, and a council who wants to champion that effort or resolution. So we would put that on the consent agenda and it would be received for information as the default unless council wishes to see it removed. So I think it would just help with meeting management and actually definitely near hurt, brought this to my attention because it's a practice that only council adopts. I, I think it's a smart one, so it's an option we can consider as well. So those are my proposed amendments today and I'll leave it to council for consideration. But if we do wish to move forward, there would be a notice of intention to adopt a new bylaw put out and then we bring the bylaw back for adoption at a future meeting. That's all I have, thinking there.
Councillors? Questions?
I said a terrifying question and I, I reached out to Mal, she answered, so for example, in today's agenda package. C five through C nine within movement to be consent agenda. C ten would stay upside.
C ten would stay upside.
You get? All right then, no further comments or questions. I'll uh recommended motion is that the township of Aspedale Norwood accepts this report through the that council directs staff to advertise the intention to adopt the updated procedural bylaw at its next regular meeting with the amendment amendments proposed. Uh can I have a move there? Counselor War, Counselor Walsh, all in favor, motions carried. Now I'll move over to correspondence for action. What's council's wishes with respect, C five, support for electoral reform, uh municipality of Brighton? Deputy Mayor Bird? Motion to support, seconder, Counselor War. In further discussion, all in favor, motion is carried. C six, swim to survive training, uh city of Dryden. Uh.
Uh motion to support.
Motion to support, Counselor War. Seconder Deputy Mayor Bird. Any comments or questions? All in favor, that motion is carried. Natural gas municipality of the tree, uh tweet. Uh Deputy Mayor Bird?
Uh motion to support.
Uh seconder, Counselor War. Comments, all favor, motions carried. Opposing the elimination of automatic speed enforcement cameras, uh town of Midland opposing the elimination. Uh Counselor War.
Uh motion to receive.
To receive? Okay, can I get a second?
With with the comment, the reality is we 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 don't experience the use of them here, so I don't I don't think it's fair to even comment on it really, uh because we haven't been involved in it, but I I would support just receiving at this point.
Okay, second by Counselor Walsh. Any further comments, all in favor, motion is carried. Ontario, Ontario Community Infrastructure, now township of Edwardsburg, uh Cardinal, Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. It was good reading, that was. Uh.
Would be supported?
Support from Deputy Mayor Bird. Seconder, Counselor Walsh. Any comments, all in favor, motions carried. And lastly, C ten, a request to name the roadway of Alma Street to the community center as Right League Way. Um, I did some checking in on this. It does not affect the mine on one. This is still eighty eight. Um Alma Street. Um, this is not known as a roadway and it's a laneway in and uh in uh honoring their parents and property that they owned up on Ridge Street as you spread the report, I think they've done their due diligence big time. Um. Lot of neighbors agreed. And when you think about it, you have a lot of information that you have to change over and it costs money. This was an easy fix, I think, and it supports the uh the good things that Bud and Hazel have done in this municipality from the first. Deputy Mayor Bird?
Uh yeah, that was my only question too. Um just are there any logistics behind it that has to be changed? That was my only concern, but otherwise, I I really can't think of anybody else who deserves this more with everything they've done. And what an amazing report that the family did. And I'm sure all the information they have is just, it's just some of what they've accomplished. So um that was my only question, and if that's like, if that works with staff, there's no big um changes, then I I certainly support this.
Uh, Counselor War?
Yeah, yeah, I would second that. I would second that, and I again, I can't uh I can't think of a more thorough report uh or asking for something than what has been provided. And uh wow, they they supported everything.
They did.
Yeah.
They did, yeah.
No, I echo the same thing that's been said by Counselor or and Deputy Member Bird is two amazing people have done tremendous amount of work for this community. And my only question was the same as Deputy Mayor Bird's was, is there any impact on nine one one? And it sounds like nothing at all, so I think it's a great honor of mine and thank them for bringing it forward.
Okay. So Deputy Mayor Bird moved and Counselor War was second, and comments that we made all in favor, motions carried. Council liaison reports. Who would like to start? Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, Business Advisory Committee, um thanks to Melanie. So our last meeting, we really uh kind of done a complete debrief on on the four community markets. And really wanted to get feedback from both vendors and residents. So the group, uh we kind of worked on putting together some questions. Um, we would massage them a little bit and back and forth, and thank you very much, Melanie. That has gone out to all vendors that either came and participated or at least inquired about coming to our market. Uh we just had some questions around, you know, is Saturday the best day? Is Saturdays of long weekends potentially the best day? Uh would you be open to more than four markets uh in the summer? Would you be open to potentially a couple of being weeknights? Uh and we just asked a little bit around location. So those have gone out, and I know you said we've already got four responses back from our vendors, which is awesome. And then to layer on top of that, uh work with Melanie, and we reduced it a little bit, uh and we don't want to the general public as well. We we want to know from the people in the community as to what their thoughts on the market as well. So that information will all be brought back for our next meeting and instructed to formulate what our plan is for twenty twenty six with the market. But certainly, um, everything is great, promising and positive with the market. And I I look over counsel work as you were involved in in the in the inception of this, so it's obviously nice to see it come to fruition. And yeah, lots of great learnings over the course of the summer, but certainly from the group, uh there's a feeling that we want to obviously continue to do it. Um, two of the things that I
Yeah, so before you move on, um just that it was mentioned that there's sixteen uh stands for the Christmas.
Yes.
If you can give cards and ask how that they will book sixteen more, because you've had ten and twelve.
Yes, yeah, that's a good one. Yeah, yeah, that makes more definitely a lot of money that way as well. Um and now a lot of those at our last market that we held, a lot of them were asking about the Christmas markets, so I'm sure we'll see some of the same. Uh just two of the quick things, the business map, there's been a lot of work done with this and that and that. That's kind of next on my radar to really work with the group in terms of how we can leverage it. Mel's created for me a nice signage with it. Anyway, I talked to Mike, uh we have a lot of students that have been here for the Eastern Hero Fire Training Academy that are looking for places for lunch. Uh it's not to leverage all of this is that way. The community center here is another place to look at. We have a lot of people in here uh for hockey tournaments over the summer. Or sorry, the winter, but that's potentially another opportunity. So we're looking at different ways that we can leverage that map. And just the last uh piece I had is um Kara Johnson did resign from our committee. Uh just felt that was just too much work at this point to stay on, but uh the group would like her replaced. Feeling is we're, we are already a small group and most markets do take up a lot of time, so I'm not sure what the process is. Uh but wait, there's a year left in that term, and we certainly could use another body to to help uh members. It's all we have to do is I guess just put a part of just social media or how does it normally happen?
Counselor Wolf?
Um, thank you through you and to Councilon Walsh. I just want to say that uh the the job that the committee um has done, it's been exceptional because if you you know, an idea is only a an idea unless you get the people to do it. And we wouldn't have known if a mar- market was going to work, like it's just an idea until you try. And you know, I I was fortunate to get to a couple of them, and I was really impressed with um the quality of the services that were provided and the the vendors that were there. And um I I just like, please take back my compliments to your your group, because I know how much work it is to, you know, to come out on a Saturday and donate your time, and that's, you know, that's what makes the community.
No, and and just if I can just bill on that, use the built community. I know those discussions about is that the right location, but as I sat there and observed and watched the forum, especially that last one, you're seeing all kinds of local, our local people walking there, buying something, chatting with neighbors, community members. To me, that's all about building community, and that's really the location I believe all are are aligned, and that is the right location for it, so. Yeah, thank you.
Um, any other, any other?
Yeah, just how do we kind of go about like uh the the
They're adding more.
Oh, through you, through you, Mayor. If I could confer with our C O and certainly that's out out the door, we will do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Deputy Mayor Bird?
Uh, thank you through you, Mayor. Um at our last county meeting, MP Dave Smith attended and basically presenting his checks to his um um probably is uh lower tiers and the in the county. And the county received um one point two six million from OSIF, so that's good. And then uh he could not um give the information to um us because he's not our M V P. But um I do believe ours dropped by twenty seven thousand dollars again, so uh but um anyhow, we we are getting something. Um also at uh the county meeting, um they just presented the the draft budget pressures and um but yesterday, I'm sure you got currier. We got our our draft budget binder. I haven't looked at it yet. But right now, um we're sitting at five point four four percent of the county um that is required. So we'll we'll see where that lands um when we have our next meeting. And we had our library meeting last night, library board meeting. Um we approved the draft budget to come to council last night and um it's sitting at one point four three percent increase, so very um stable funding requirement from the township. And one of the things I wanted to mention, that the one thing that was really going to increase it was our our teen um program, and I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, that we didn't have any funding for that because that was a seed program last year. And um our C O wrote a uh a letter to the Legion, and one of our board members presented it. And they are um going to uh fund that program um and are giving it the library twenty five hundred dollars towards that teen teen youth program. So that's fantastic. So so that helps bring those numbers down. Um, and uh, yeah, I think that's, I think that's everything. Everything else you will see um in the C O report. Thank you.
Counselor War?
Thank you through you, Mayor. Uh we have a cultural heritage meeting tonight um at the Heritage Center, so we'll be talking about uh the proposed budget, and we kind of set out speakers for the next year. So that will uh be coming forward. We want to help um out the budget process so that it's all finished before uh the next council meeting. And uh all also the Irish Kaylee on November eighteenth has sold out. So we're very thankful for everyone that has supported that. And um we're very thankful for the uh Peter Robinson Grant that uh allowed us to do all of these things. And we have another event that we're um we kind of help out the library um uh in Westwood every year they have a family night uh for Christmas. And so the cultural heritage, we go and supply the the treats and and help them out with that event, and that's coming up. I think the first week of December, I haven't had a confirmation date from Trish yet, but that's coming up, and that will be our last.
One for the year?
The last one for the year.
Yeah, busy year.
Very busy year with uh Peter Robinsons and
Yeah.
everything.
Two hundred more years.
See the next one. Uh, nothing else to bring up? Uh, general business, does anybody have anything they would like to discuss? Uh Deputy Mayor Bird?
I just noticed the email yesterday, um Roma delegations, they are due, those um are due November eighteenth at five P M. Do we have another meeting before then or no? I guess we go November eighteenth is when I okay, so I'm just wondering if between staff and council, we could think of that and if we need to put a couple of delegations in. I am going with the county, but I will be there and can certainly
Yeah.
Do delegation, so um um, okay. And I I don't know what staff is going, but anyway, um I'm sure they could probably be the the same ones that we do over and over and over again, but every time they hear it.
They see what they're listening.
Maybe it helps, so uh if we can bring those forward for the next meeting, that'd be great.
All right. Those are the exact same request.
Same thing coming through yesterday.
Well, I had it, yes. Uh, there's no closed session or notice of motion, so we'll move on to bylaws now.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you. That the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of the council of the township of Aspedale Norwood on October twenty one, twenty twenty five, be read a first, second, and third time in number twenty twenty five dash forty nine.
Counselor Walsh, Counselor War. All in favor, motions carried. Future meeting schedule, everybody has seen it. And that concludes our business for today. May I get a motion to adjourn, and the time is two forty nine. Uh Deputy Mayor Bird, Counselor War, all in favor, motions carried. Thank you, everyone.